Something like that.
I get that.
Good evening, tonight is the city council workshop December first twenty twenty one six P M we'll call the meeting in order. We'll start with a pledge of the flag, brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you folks.
This is.
Over here.
We'll let you sit there.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Rowland.
Eric.
What are you saying? You're not seeing me now. Can you see me?
The mayor. Yes. For present, one absent.
Come on.
Mayor, I know you move around on this uh agenda, which is a guide for you and members of council, solicitor as myself. I have granted permission to Eric there, he asked to do address council. Uh and that's the way it works, uh if a person comes to me or to refer to me, I'm granted permission.
I think he's here in response to our questions from our last meeting.
Okay, and so I'm going to uh suggest that Grant hand me out, tell me the stick gives and answer whatever questions.
You want me to go first?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright.
Why double part?
Eric, we've been.
I followed the line, I bugged in front of somebody.
We've been through two or three meetings now where we've had your requests and ended up tabling them for one reason or another. Uh the last time was there was some concern about a being a twelve hour uh festival down there. For for the serving of alcohol and things, so I had spoken to you the other night, if you just want to elaborate with what you told me.
Yeah, first sorry about my appearance, I just came from the greenhouse, not out of disrespect or anything, I would clean it up, so um. Yeah, thanks for letting me uh answer any questions or concerns. I'm not sure, first of all, I I don't want to take your valuable time, so who is is familiar with what I'm doing and who isn't, so I don't go explain.
We are all familiar.
Okay, so uh when the request came, uh there was a uh a time to close the street and a time to uh open the back up. Uh that doesn't uh go inside with uh with how long the event takes. Uh we, it takes us quite a bit, we do pretty much go.
Yes.
All out to to decorate, so we uh we start at the eight o'clock in the morning and then by ten eleven we close the street and we finish by by noon. Um we get the when we're done, so at noon, we have multiple things going on, our our main event is normally late afternoon into the night. Uh in the afternoon, uh we have, we have had dancers from uh local kids' dance, we have somebody sing, we have. And sometimes we don't have uh nothing, just uh you know, we're open, but uh we set up in the morning and. Uh because we have to be ready for when when the crowd comes. Uh so after we stop serving at ten o'clock, ten thirty latest, uh at midnight, the street is open and. And I uh like to say that we uh we clean the street and it's clean on that one we uh we start. Uh I take all the garbage out and all the garbage gets uh gets left there. Uh we pretty much finished uh finished everything by uh by midnight. Uh now, it it's only there from uh noon till midnight, no, uh we have a rolling crowd, so to speak, uh yeah.
Eric, I I think where the confusion came in was the twelve A M, we thought you were serving till twelve A M.
No, no, absolutely not, uh if anybody's been there, I uh you know, I guess I I want to thank you for uh last year to uh. Give you a try for for the first three events and since then, we have done four more. Uh we uh uh even uh if somebody calls me, even when we're normally open, if they call me at ten thirty, so what time you're open, I I'm at eleven. Because I'm uh I don't want anybody at eleven to walk in. We stopped, the band stops, you know, sometimes it's ten fifteen, uh some sometimes it's ten, but we stop serving outside at ten thirty. Uh uh and we we are actually literally everybody is off the street, there's nobody there at midnight.
Okay.
Uh so, yeah, that's.
Eric, if if I may, I've been complimenting you, but I do want to thank you, I'm in charge of the street department, you do a hell of a job, it's always spotless.
Thank you.
And I I misinterpreted also when I saw the twelve P M, which I should know, I I never realized it also, we thought you meant you were serving beer till midnight. I I understand that, that's that's more the reason.
And I I like I said, we're we're uh hey, I uh.
Actually.
I want to do that, so uh.
Well, you're actually doing us a city a favor really, by doing this and cleaning the street up, that's what I'm saying, I I appreciate it, because otherwise it would cost us.
Yeah, no, we we sweet, we uh.
Yep, I know you don't.
I you know, I I take I take pride in the in a in a street and uh.
Yep.
Uh I don't uh even uh though it, there is certain spots on the corner that.
Yeah.
That don't look appealing in the eye of the beast, I just bring a view in here, but uh just to show you, that's not my garbage. That garbage goes in my pickup and that leaves that night, and that's nothing left behind.
As far as that goes, Mayor, I'm fine with that, I understand.
Back on the agenda.
Yeah, I I have no issue with that, I don't.
If there ever, hey, uh I'm, I wanna, if there's ever an issue or a concern, uh I can, uh you know, where to reach me, it's not. I'm always uh, hey, I'm not perfect, and if there's uh things to improve or concerns, I'm I'm always available to answer on your next one.
One one of these nights, we'll get the mayor to come back on here, so that's Rick Old.
I estimate it.
Believe me, Eric, if all events were run that smoothly, I I don't think they would even be discussing anything, seriously, you know, I.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, that that that's the only thing we wanted to clear up.
You have anything else?
No, just to gather, thank you for uh, you know, I I think uh uh.
Now makes sense.
You know, it it's the events now, uh I uh want to say one thing, when uh Dennis had his opening, he had the street blocked off. That was my busiest Saturday, not having an event, so I think it it's uh. Do I make money on events? Yes, I wouldn't be doing it, but I think it draws in a a crowd, when somebody else does something, we have a rotating uh uh. A crowd that, like I said, I, people like, aren't you concerned about Dennis opening a brewery? It's no best thing ever. And that that first day he opened, it proved that, because this year, literally, I'm not, I'm not lying, that was my best Saturday for non-event. Because they all came to Dennis for the opening, and then what they do, they're like, we're here, where else can we go?
Yep.
And lucky enough, that was one of the places, so it's great.
And and to be honest with you, Dennis says the same thing about your advance, he said, your overflow ends up at his place, really, it it's.
Yeah.
It's amazing how you would think it benefits one person, but it spreads throughout the entire town.
That's good, very good.
Amen.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, any order?
Yep.
I guess I'm disappointed.
I'm sure that's the right order. The chief's sitting here, so you're okay.
No, I don't, I don't wanna, you know, back to class. I know that's incorrect, and I was just not normal, that's.
No, no, no.
So I'm, I appreciate the opportunity, I have to pay for everything.
I think that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Take care. Have a nice holiday.
Linda Sterling is on her way, she contacted me just before I commute.
Tell him she lost her spot.
She's saving her spot.
I'm guessing, but you can handle her spot, right?
Yeah.
Um.
Then she doesn't.
Then she doesn't have to speak.
She has to. Oh, we'll move to the last spot then. Guess we can try.
Jeff?
Uh I only had something I gave to you, Mayor, like over about uh about the NIMs things.
Requirements.
Yeah, requirements and stuff like that. Okay, so that's my, the only thing I have is happy holiday for everybody.
Very quick.
Thank you. Yep. We just moved you to the last slot, now we gotta put you back in.
Better put you back in.
Cheese.
There's no one else, I don't get requested uh flapparization to the district council or you, so.
Fine, we're safe.
C D B G.
You're up.
That would be me. Um hi, everybody.
Did you come bring gifts?
Uh yeah, I did, actually.
Oh, okay.
In a kind of a way.
Okay.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, yeah, so um. Uh we have a bid opening for one eighteen, one twenty-two, the demolition of um that property, two bids came in. The low bid was a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, second bid was two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The bids came in over double.
Two hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Came in over double what was expected and what was estimated, um why? Because.
One eighteen, one twenty-two.
Well, um during the uh during the um mandatory pre-bid. Uh they actually went inside that building. And they found things that were much worse than they were expecting.
I can believe that.
The staircase in there, interestingly enough, is listing thirty degrees to the center. Yep.
Which staircase?
The one on the left. And um.
Floor is gone, I should.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, all the floors are down now in the middle, I mean, it's.
Yeah, when you could.
But the other, the thing that I think that they was, one of one of the biggest contributors to cost is all the debris will have to be disposed of as contaminated.
Yeah.
So it will all go into a, you know, the special contaminated site, the cost level.
Yes, understandable.
The additional requirements from the memorandum of agreement that you have with the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission. Uh no, State Historic Preservation Office, that added about twenty-five thousand to the bid. Um and there's gonna be a lot of hand demolition and safety concerns. Um. Any repairs to the neighboring buildings that need to be made or handled through a change order, that's the way we ended up doing it. Because there was no way of, there was no way for the contractors present to make a reasonable estimation of what it was gonna cost. I mean, we don't know what we're gonna, they try, but you know, the buildings are rebutting each other, so there's really no way to know what they're gonna find when they tear down. When they tear down those buildings. So um. You have, this is where it gets scary, but don't worry, it's all good, you have a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in available funding. And we're going to need about a hundred and seventy to demolish. I called Hank, they um immediately agreed to put fifty thousand dollars into coverage protocol. I have a memorandum of understanding here. And a phone.
Two, two.
Multiple phones.
Phones calling, I uh will pass these out, I guess you probably want your solicitor to look at them. And it's just an agreement, basically, that they wanna have signed. Um stipulating. Just that they're they're giving you uh fifty thousand dollars if you're, you know, gonna need more than that from the as for Mr. Slavy, um.
Do you, do you have enough for the members of council and the mayor?
If not, it's a share.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Let me give you one of that company, it's taken a back out here.
Do you want me to give that price?
You and I will let him know.
Yes.
You get one, Jeff. Eric, give me one there. I need one.
Where is that?
Alright.
Do you have one more?
Basically, it's saying, the memorandum of understanding is uh is saying that they will, they, you'll use your C D B G money first. They will cover any expenses up to fifty thousand, you will need to show a match in demolition, which is no problem. You you'll get your two thousand twenty-one funding and you can use that, that'll cover the match. And in the event that fifty thousand doesn't cover it, and we are hoping, I mean, beyond all, but we're, there's gonna be a real tight. Very tight protocol on change orders, on everything, we're gonna do everything possible to keep this cost down. Um but you would go back, I would go back to Hank on your behalf and let them know what happened and possibly, you know, at that point, they would entertain. More funding if it was possible for them, so uh but this agreement takes you fifty thousand.
So close to a hundred thousand, close to.
It's about a hundred and seventy thousand, um.
What, within the circumstances, yeah.
Yeah, and um it's, it gives you a cushion, it gives you a very small cushion. Um but uh that's that's okay, because we need to keep, you know, there's no reason to, it's a lump sum bid. Um I'm figuring no more than fifteen thousand for repairs to either side of the building is what's in there. Um they went in the building, there's not any surprises, we got all the surprises, they're out in the open. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Linda, so this will go through a regular public meeting of the council, the mayor and I will sign, and uh.
Yep.
And now I think just, who's put the agenda items down?
Kathy and I.
Okay. Special meeting agenda, regular meeting agenda.
Yeah.
Which one does this go on?
Yeah.
How's any of yours?
Um I don't think, I think that can go to the regular meeting agenda.
The thirteen?
Yeah.
Same thing with Eric, could be regular meeting agenda.
Yeah, well, that's different, exactly, it's been three hours.
Sarah, what?
Yes, I'm sorry, what was the other regular meeting agenda? Was that something to do with me?
What will it be, the special meeting?
Okay. Okay, okay.
So you're okay with the regular?
So it's gonna go to regular council?
Yes.
And this can be passed off to you on the fourteen?
Yes, absolutely.
Or if you're here, you'll sign it, you can have it.
Yeah, I'll I'll be at the thirteen, maybe on the thirteen.
Okay, got it.
Are any of the C D FAGgers gonna be at the special meeting?
Yes.
Trick question, I don't know what to do.
It's Monday, I was answering, Monday I can.
Yeah, that happens with classified there for some reason, I don't know what's going on, okay. Next on my agenda. Um. Is uh clean amendment to your two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen professional services agreement. Uh basically, you have thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen admin, C D B G admin. That needs to be spent. Uh by next week. And sixteen and seventeen, um initially, the the funding was supposed to go towards the zoning and comp plan rewrite. But uh that is still.
It's, we won't be able to spend it.
Yeah, we won't be, we won't be able to spend it, that's why.
It's so bad, you can't spend it.
But stuff, stuff happens, um so what C D C O, what we we decided we could do is um. Just change your professional services agreement so that to to allow C D C O to use the two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen funding, which we had not billed you for in that agreement. Because we didn't have services that you would need to pay us for, but you can use that funding to pay us for future services. And then we will, we will put in funding for the zoning and comp plan into your two thousand eighteen funding. Thereby getting around this deadline.
Originally, I thought it had to be spent by the end of this year, and then I could spend it, because we already have a proposal, but when I heard it was due, like.
You're gonna sweep.
Yeah.
And I have the proposals now, but we're gonna have a selection by the thirteen, I can't have them fill me.
Even, yeah, even, we just can't.
Trust me, I tried, but this way, we still get the money, we're just kind of working around it.
Um now.
So regular agenda, special meeting agenda?
This, I was counting on a special meeting agenda, but you don't have a special meeting advertised.
Right, yeah.
Well, we try, we try.
It's out there. The the ad was sent to the news item, they nailed the print it.
No, I feel like, that's happened to me.
So, we we have to send another ad to the news item, but tonight, we have to pick what day we're changing the special meeting to, we're shooting for Saturday at eight o'clock.
Saturday at eight o'clock in the morning.
I will, I will have you in the schedule, if I have to hand carry the advertising, you have your.
For Saturday morning at eight o'clock?
No.
You mean.
Sunday morning.
Sunday? Yeah.
I go there Saturday. Monday.
Um is there any way?
There.
Monday.
Do it, we'll do it.
Monday would be good.
Yeah, we got enough time to get the ad in.
Six P M.
Is there any way to sign, Mr. Solicitor, to sign an, is there any way to to sign an agreement and ratify it later?
Always, I'm sorry, you're asking. I I do it on numerous occasions and have council ratified.
Yeah, and until it's ratified, of course, it can't go into effect, but it's fine.
Sure.
Okay, so if it can't.
Well, it's a special meeting on Monday.
Just wait until.
It can't wait till Monday?
I'm not sure. What day is Monday, the sixth?
You need it before the.
Friday.
No, um.
If we don't do it, we're gonna lose a pile of money.
Well, I don't know, but would Monday work?
Why can't Monday, Monday won't work?
Well, Linda's saying it's too late.
Well, it it, the problem is, we need to get the invoice to D C E D. And I I, you know, we're we're giving ourselves a three-day cushion currently, because you just never know how how, when they process paperwork. So what I'm trying to figure out is.
If you're gonna do it Friday, pare that meeting down to about two agenda items, anything that's not essential.
Just have to be on the C D C O permit.
Are you guys getting the news paper?
We do.
We're never gonna get it tomorrow.
The newspaper comes out early in the morning, it's Wednesday already.
Oh, that's probably what you wanna do, yeah, you'll never make it.
Yeah, you won't have enough time.
There's no way you're gonna make it.
So, okay, so.
Can you do it virtually?
Is there a problem? What about, well, is there a problem with signing the agreement tonight and ratifying it? Now, it doesn't.
Sign it, you can't ratify it today.
No, 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 but um.
No, this is a workshop, this isn't a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't.
No, you you can't, hold on.
But you're signing something, that's an affirmative action, so.
Sorry.
So he could sign it tonight, you're saying?
I didn't.
No, he said that he can't, he can't, I was asking if it goes, because then that wouldn't go, that would, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but so I had to ask.
Because what happens, if he signs it.
He has to sign his item tomorrow.
Gives it to her, she sends it in and we go against it.
That's right.
It would go up there till Friday.
So we're going to.
It has to be twenty-four hours in the event, so.
That's the problem, the newspaper comes out at, I get mine out on Saturday mornings, so.
But if Monday is the day, if Monday's the day you have to do it, um.
I I don't.
I just, I don't wanna take a chance of losing money, because we're, the day I got to meet.
I signed it, you're here on behalf of the city of San Marcos, the city of New York.
Can we ask Tim Zilek?
Well, but it's set up, the the mayor signs it off with these documents.
So if he, if he signs it on behalf of the city tonight, let me get this straight, we can have a special meeting on Monday night and all's we gotta do is vote and ratify it. Friends say you can't sign.
Only if you're comfortable.
Well, that that's why I'm asking you.
Thirty-two days, no.
I'm not comfortable.
Yeah, let me put it this way, as long as city council doesn't make any affirmative decision, but if in his capacity, a city administrator wants to sign. Without city council authorizing it, you sign, you can sign, I know. Lawrence, wait, this is vast, the angels on earth, and we don't wanna lose the money, that's what it about.
But for scenario, if somebody can challenge what I do, and if it's determined that I did wrong, then it gets reversed. If it's determined what I did is in compliance with my position as city administrator, then the city avoids losing money.
The only problem is, the mayor has to sign it because C D B G requires chief elected official, you attest, so I don't know that.
Okay.
I don't know that that works.
You need the official, no BS, signed piece of paper.
That's correct.
Prior to Monday, is what you're saying.
That, yeah, that's what you're basically telling me.
Well, I'm not telling you that you'll lose the money if I don't have the signed piece of paper prior to money, Monday. I'm telling you, I'm a little nervous about it, because it it sits on somebody's desk down at D C E D.
Right.
Then I I can't, I can't.
We can't send in one that Bob Slavy signs.
What about if you change the way I is and have these.
Probably.
Number one fan, like behind Bob?
Yeah. Just hit the door. Well, hit the door. There you go, thanks.
Usually I'm a pen to click.
Sorry.
All the days.
What what comes down to, I guess, do you wanna have a meeting on Saturday or Sunday? What's that you?
Yeah, it is the tenth. The tenth is the charging, they need the.
I love that with Sunday.
They need the um, they need the invoice by the tenth, they think they will not extend it, not at her date.
When is the tenth, next Thursday?
Food, that is, that's it.
The third, next Thursday is the tenth, right?
Friday.
One, two, no?
Tenth is Friday.
Tenth is next Friday, is that what you're saying, next? Well, John, that's Friday.
If the, if D C E D is not um.
Yeah, but Charlie, you're not, you're not catching what she's saying, she needs, she, she can have one signed by Bob Slavy.
Yes.
Which doesn't cut it with D C E D, it has to be signed by the mayor.
Right.
If we give it to her Monday evening, that's three days before a decision has to be made, or what, or in their hands.
And you're scheduled Saturday or Sunday, that's all you can do.
And and if it's Sunday, we have.
Whatever show shows, other than.
You still feel like that's mine.
You don't wanna get uncomfortable with that.
I I I.
I don't know what else to do.
Nikki, Nikki Hogan, who is our financial specialist, said that uh she wanted to send the invoice in on Friday. Um.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is, this is.
Uh.
Does it have to be a legal notice?
It has to be, yes, it has to, public notice.
That's a public notice, yeah.
Yeah. That's okay, it's gotta be a public notice.
There's no special exception, because they failed to put it in.
Yeah, we're, probably not, John. I know, that will.
The best they don't get out of that is they won't charge us.
Now, you're talking about legally?
Yeah, but legally, we're probably be sending it, I am, I'm done.
You don't wanna do anything that's not legal.
No.
No, I I would, no.
Um.
I just thought maybe Tim would make an exception and put the notice in the paper, although the time has closed. He would say, we didn't go to print yet, I'll change it, cause it's our mistake.
Okay, you guys keep talking.
Um, I. I have, I have an idea.
Are you calling this?
Um. I actually, I'm actually friends with the publisher of the news item now because. The company she works with, she bought out the news item and she worked in Milton, and I know her personally, I can step out, call her on the cell phone, see if there's anything she can do. You want me to do that?
Does it, well, let me ask you this, does, if we have a meeting on Friday afternoon, evening, is that enough time for you?
Right.
Because you're still not getting it from the D C E D on Monday.
No, no.
You still can't get it in?
Sorry.
That's twenty four hours.
So we're gonna wait till.
I, I just.
Might as well just leave it on Monday and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it happens, it happens.
Take a chance. I would just take the chance.
It's a news item.
I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable just letting him sign it. Sorry. Away.
It's not fair.
Thirteen thousand six fifteen.
Uh, uh.
I'll, I'll be honest, I, John, I would not feel comfortable letting him sign it. I mean, whether he did it before or not, it's not. Well, it doesn't matter, the mayor has. That's what I mean, I, take the chances.
Bob, I know that's not.
It's not our fault.
All right, what else you have, kid?
All right.
Obviously, that's not gonna. There's no resolution now.
Just wait and see.
So, that's, that's the agenda item for the special meeting, correct?
Yes. Um.
I know where that is.
The, we'll need a motion to award the bid for one eighteen, one twenty two East in the Pennant Street pending C D C O P review. The review is underway, there's been some changes in, um, some, some, uh. Regulation that's requiring our labor standards specialists to work with affordable because they've never followed them before. Um, but, uh, that will be finished very shortly. Um, and that motion to approve the notice to proceed would, would help, um, get that project going.
Special meeting or regular view?
I was just gonna.
Well, it depends, how much we can win on the special meeting.
Well, it's literally, well, if it's gonna be Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, as little as possible.
I don't know the direction.
Monday, Monday, you can split half and half, I don't care.
Doesn't matter, it's up to you.
What about anybody else deals? So it's not of importance?
Well, it's a, it's a, it is.
John, put it on the agenda for the special meeting, and let's get.
Special meeting.
Is it on an immediate carrier?
It's, depends on when you want, um, when you want, uh. Affordable to be able to start demolishing.
I'm putting on this mission.
Okay.
Get it done. Let's get it done.
Special meeting. Oh, I would.
You know, this, this.
Is that?
A beating around the bush.
Get it done. That's what I feel.
And then the hang, N O U is on the regular meeting.
Okay.
Um, and at some point, I would like to get the spelling of the incoming mayor's name.
It's U L.
Yeah.
R I.
Yes.
C A. First name, Richard.
That's all I have.
Rich.
Thank you.
Should I add my updates now?
Yeah.
I only have that.
Do you have anything else for, for special meet?
Special meet, okay.
And I don't have anything that's gonna require action, so, right now.
Okay. All right.
Uh, actually, for thirteen, revenue loss, I'm gonna need to talk to Mister Slavy. C D C O P's still waiting for, um, your audited financials from twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, so we can get your calculated revenue loss. The importance of.
Mayor, if we do this on Friday.
She said, she said that won't help anyway.
It won't?
It won't affect it till Friday.
What were you going to say?
Go ahead, Bob.
What time you wanna do it on Friday?
She said it won't help, what's, what do?
Because I have somebody that is personally going to walk this through.
Yeah, she said it won't matter if it's Friday, Friday evening, it won't matter, she won't get C D C O P till Monday anyway, so we might as well just have a Monday meeting.
Okay, I'll send it.
Well, wait a second, maybe there isn't, wait, don't hang on about that. Yeah, because if we get it Friday night, we can take care of it Monday during, during business hours.
Monday morning.
Give it one more day.
Yeah, let's give us one more day.
So do it Friday.
Please tell me what you want.
Friday.
Friday, Friday, six P M.
Friday.
And I don't have a hope.
Friday.
Are we gonna frequently show up on Friday? This is what are they doing?
It's Friday night.
What's it like?
It is.
Six o'clock, that's what I'm saying.
Friday, three?
Scott, Scott called.
I won't be there till five.
Bobby, you're, we're not gonna have a one. Mrs. Boyer can't make Friday.
Well, it depends on the time.
What time?
You tell me the time, the guy wants me to tell him what to do.
Somebody please give a time.
Something.
Is it gonna be on tomorrow's paper?
I mean, come morning. It'll be in tomorrow's.
Scott, you can, you can, six o'clock, three p.m.
Six o'clock, Friday.
Just do like.
That border?
No.
What's that? Six o'clock, Friday.
We'll try and all day Monday then.
I'll be there whenever you tell me. So be here ten minutes.
Bob, scheduled for six o'clock on Friday, scheduled for six o'clock on Friday. I mean, if someone else is gonna speak up, I don't, just do it.
Well, will there be people there to do the work?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a one, which is big, Bob.
Scott said he can make it.
I mean.
I can be here, how about you?
It'll be three of us.
It'll be three of us.
Okay.
I mean. We'll take our chances, if, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. At least we did our job.
What times are it?
I'm gonna save your job.
What time is you standing?
Six P M.
Six.
I've never seen anything like this, never. I, I don't.
Take a deep breath, Charlie.
You're almost done.
Thirty one more days.
I'm better, believe it.
Okay.
Thirty three.
Yeah, that's right, tell them.
Thirty three.
Thirty then.
Okay.
My god.
Friday, six o'clock.
Sir, was that ten?
So maybe we'll sky here, that's right.
And I mean.
And, yeah, that's good enough.
Every form.
Now, are we gonna be able to roll the other stuff that night? Is that, yeah?
I keep it as slim as you can.
Okay.
You do, you only do the bonuses and, because you have to do payroll.
Okay.
And the, let the C D C O P thing, that's it for the special meeting.
Okay.
So we're not here for two hours.
Okay.
The bonuses are on Friday, actually, we thought, have to deal with, we might, we gotta get it.
Probably what was changed, but bonuses.
But.
We have the.
Nine o'clock tomorrow.
I thought it.
You have the wording, right?
Uh, it's the same as what was sent on Friday.
Yeah, not all of it, because we're gonna break it up now, but, okay, yeah, you could send it over, then, uh, move it, get it after.
All right, let me just jump in so we can not be here till three A M. Uh, we got our proposals in for your, uh, zoning book and your comprehensive plan zoning book rewrite, we got three proposals in. Uh, they're under review right now, by the thirteenth, I should have a name for you to hopefully vote on for your meeting.
Regular.
Regular meeting, regular meeting. Um, and they came in about the same price that we were expecting, so there wasn't any shock with that, like. Uh, Brownfield Grant, I am getting the, um, R F. Uh, P's proposals, they're due December sixth, so I'll be reviewing them next week. Um, and I think we're gonna have a nice showing of those as well. Uh, also, Mayor Elect has been, uh, very busy meeting a lot of C D C O P people, and today we met some, uh, Congressman Muser staff, so. Um, he's gonna get pretty sick of saying me, I think, but. But I, I appreciate you accommodating every time I say, can you meet with this person, can you meet with that person, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Yeah, so, um, a lot of very exciting projects that we have, um, happening in the future for the city. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Of course. So someone, there's one question for our.
Go ahead.
Um. Assuming since the special meeting, we're condensing it, you want the professional services agreement on the regular meeting?
No, it has to be on a special, because you have to do that before we vote on it.
Yeah, you're gonna probably need that, then go.
Yes.
Yeah, we need.
So just include that in it.
I, I want, since that's a contractual matter, I want this with council and, uh. Representatives from C Q before this is over, Mayor.
And then, uh, did I ever sign over some, the ARPA bonus, your ARPA bonus program, a template policy? Uh, C D C O P recommends that Mister Solicitor, you did a look at that.
Right, we have that, and that will be discussed with in present in the room when I, with council, uh, in executive session, since it's a contractual matter.
Okay. And that's all, and that's all we have, right?
She's.
Okay.
Okay. You good enough, C D C O Pers?
I did.
Correspondence, Bobby, yeah.
No, sir.
Boards of committee?
There, uh, I just mentioned there are two vacant cities, uh, one on housing authority, one on sewer authority. It's my opinion that, uh, those positions do expire. Uh, for the records that I inherited, uh, years ago, and we've been tracking, those positions expire in, uh, in January. But I want to go back and check when they were appointed, and I have to research the minutes to do that. If that was before you became mayor. That's it, sir.
I said, if we normally do it, the central, we do it in the central.
That's correct.
Okay.
So that then will, that will come over, uh, on the December thirteenth.
Let's do boards.
Housing.
The housing, not with you, and these would be reappointments. These are members that have been on these boards, and they have submitted requests to be, uh, considered to be reappointed. But I need to go back and look at the minutes from four years ago.
Thank you.
No, so now I do that.
C M A, we did.
Yep.
I would like to talk about the bonuses. And what changes were made and the contract, I never knew there was a contract, um.
Yeah, that just came up.
Right.
One day. And actually, I think it just got here at.
Three o'clock today?
That was the template for the policies.
Yeah.
Um, you're talking, you're talking about the professional services agreement? Professional service agreement was sent to, uh, in the city when Harry and Kristen came and talked. That happened, that, we had that since then.
For three hundred and some dollars to get much.
No, that's your revenue loss.
Your loss.
No, that's your revenue loss, separate agreements. So same thing, but this is for a professional service agreement, for ARPA funding, for us to manage the city's ARPA projects.
Okay, and does, do the bonuses fall under the ARPA projects?
Yeah.
Okay, how much is the city paying you to do that?
I'm not sure, I don't have one of those.
Well, we need to know, and I'd like to know if it was, uh, put in the budget. I mean, you know, this just happened, yes, that way.
It would come out of your, your.
It's out of the ARPA.
It would come out of the ARPA.
Come on.
You know, it's.
But nobody has any idea, the cost.
It should be in the agreement.
We haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, we haven't seen it. So have yous agreed to this?
When?
No, we haven't. No, we haven't found it, we just not seen it.
Okay. We have. Um. What all changes have been made?
I think you're asking them or me, or you're asking questions that they. They, as the council and the mayor, need to discuss with me in executive session regarding contractual matters.
Hey, I would like to be in that executive session, please.
Well, I don't believe you're approached to that. This is a council matter along with the mayor.
What about?
This is not a treasurer's, this is not a treasurer's decision, this is a matter in which contractual matters between the C D C O P. And the City of Shamooki, which these are the rep, the representatives, and I'm not leaving Scott out, uh, that make those decisions from there. I'm not being disrespectful to you, we're trying to.
Okay. Well, then I would like a different, uh, executive session to see.
When the time, when the time is, when the time is right.
How this is going to affect my employees and myself.
That would be fine. You know.
Priority is voting.
I think.
I would, I would appreciate that, priority is voting.
That might. It could acknowledge what her request is, but council and I and C D C O P need to talk in executive session regarding contractual part. Of this, this moment.
And you want request prior to the vote, which would be Friday, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay.
There's not gonna be any voting done here.
No, it's in.
Discuss it publicly.
So will I.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it yet. Well, if you see.
Then why don't we, why don't we do this, why don't we take an executive session, invite the people from C D C O P? You can talk about it here, and then when we come back in, talk all you want. But anything in regards to the contractual part of this, I don't believe that he can change, he can rule me out of order, whatever. This is between council and C D C O P, it's a contractual matter that needs to be talked about. Once that's over, you come back in here, if you wanna talk to everybody in here in regards to the, the contract between C D C O P and so forth, go for it. Or you can wait until, or you can wait until the meeting in which you're wanting to vote, whether to do these bonuses, whatever. At the last meeting, I got the feeling, and I agree wholeheartedly, there were a lot of unanswered questions. You folks asked me to get this all together, we have said, I have gotten this together, now it's time for you to talk, you wanna talk as a group? Because each one of you, uh, have never been all together to talk about this.
That's why we didn't vote on it at the last meeting.
That's correct, Mayor, you and, and, and Charlie, and I believe it was Scott, but, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, until we sit down and make that.
Yeah, and I don't have nothing in front of me.
So can we finish regular business and then do an executive session?
Yeah, let's finish the business, and then.
We'll get the kind of concerns, and then we'll find out what C D C O P has to say about it.
Because we need to. Yeah. I, I can't make a comment on something I don't even have in front of me, Bob.
Right.
I, I, I understand that. This has all come together in the last two days.
I respect that.
The lady asked me if she didn't see it, and I, no, no, I said no, because she should, she doesn't.
I didn't see it. And I would know why can't I, but I didn't know you didn't see it.
See that before you as a elected council member.
I didn't know you didn't see it.
I understand.
So.
I, I, I have no.
I understand that, Bob, but I didn't know they didn't see it. You didn't tell me that part.
Well, I apologize.
Well, I accept your apology, or I wouldn't have been complaining about it.
I mean.
They didn't see it.
Yeah, I think we deserve a chance to see it.
I understand that.
Well, we're. There.
It's together, and it's come here.
I would suggest we finish our business.
Go ahead.
Let's finish the business and get it done.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss it.
That's it.
Because.
Controller's not here, anything from the controller?
No, okay.
Chief. I apologize for my tardiness this evening. Uh, real quick, for the month of November, sixteen criminal arrests were completed, twenty seven traffic citations, two non-traffic citations. Eighteen parking citations, one written warning, eight parking tickets. Uh, we were dispatched to six hundred and twenty seven calls, patrol three thousand ninety six miles, issued ninety one sweeper tickets. Fifteen code tickets, and either tug or ticketed twelve trailers that are on the roadway. Um.
Sorry.
Also. Need about two minutes executive session, or represent personnel. Thank you. The, uh, hiring process is done, the list is here, so that's good.
What you need at the session, you can review that, uh, talk about that. Let him.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all.
Yes, sir. Mister Solicitor.
Well, two things, I, did you that funding agreement with that, yeah, that's, there's no problem with that, the city has to be involved in that. And the second is, we have the, the tax hearing this morning in front of Judge Jones, he signed the order for the additional five mils if you're doing for fourteen years, Joe.
Fourteen.
And, uh, the increasing the earned income tax to two percent for the last forty four five years, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City admin.
Um. What'd you think? I think I forgot. Um. Mayor, I think I just want to have the executive session so that the police are taken care of, uh, in regards to police officers. And we will deal with what I have just been talking about, uh, at that time. And that's it, sir. Uh, next, I get mayor on the, the report is the proposed new business. Uh, the Code Office is, is requesting, they had some conversation, uh, with the solicitor. In reference to repealing, uh, four existing ordinances that are covered, uh, under the Code Office, so. With that said, that is the subject of new proposed business.
We have, um.
Pardon?
We have.
Yeah. So, go for the, the, you got the form, let's do it.
I think I didn't have it, but, yeah.
Want or all, stand up, be.
On, on, on. So there are four new, um, did I have the, the document?
They, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so there are four new ordinances, or, sorry, four revised ordinances that you should have in your packet, I just don't know what sequence they are. The first one is, uh, landlord and tenants, in August, I believe it was, um, you approved the hiring of pro champs for online registration. Uh, of the rental, um, rental units, so.
So what we did, and it's in your packet, what we did is we took our current landlord tenant ordinance and we took ProChamps best practice ordinance, we're gonna merge them to, to take the best of both worlds, there were some elements in theirs that, um, I thought that we should accept, specifically right, right, uh, guarding registration, and then some elements of ours that I wanted to retain, um, specific to, um, issues regarding tenants and things like that, so, um, that is available. It is twenty seven pages, so I didn't make ten copies, but it is available here. Um, what I did put on your packet is the second page is just an Excel doc where I went through and said, here's what I think we should retain, here's what I think we should dismiss, um, here's what we should come in, bring in from ProChamps, et cetera. So that, that comparison document is attached to your thing. So that is one of the ordinances that will be read, um, on thirteen. Um, I want, I, I really like this to be read in December and January. Um, honestly, I've had issues trying to push ProChamps a little faster, I know, sir, I go too fast, I get it. But we've been dealing with this for a couple of months and, and there was some delays in, um, their responses to us in the evaluations and whatnot. So I'd really like it to be read in December and January so that we don't get deluged with the, um, paper registrations in January. We want that to be online and that's, that's the real value of bringing it into Shamooki.
We're gonna get hit with regardless, cause it can't take effect till February.
Can't take effect until thirty days after the reading?
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
Of course.
It's pre-approved.
The second reading, okay. Okay, so we, we need to, thank you, we need to, I was hopeful, okay, so we need to, we need to hit that.
We can't get that on the special meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, we need the, the days between, right, so we can't do it at thirteen, ten, we need twenty, some days, okay. All right, so that's, that's ordinance one. Flipping over, we're also looking at updating the ticket ordinance, right now the tickets and the third page is a sample ticket. The ticket references nineteen sixty four chapters, we're looking to bring that up to the current, um, either IPMC or ordinance references. So that, um, that change is recommended, we're also looking at the ticket, uh, the first offense, keeping it at twenty five dollars, but then increasing the second, third, et cetera, again, these have not been updated for several decades. So, uh, we're looking at changing the second from.
The third, the third only, the third.
Oh, the third, sorry, the third.
The third is gonna go from, the third offense is gonna go from a hundred to a hundred fifty.
The second offense is gonna be seventy five.
To change that.
Yeah, yeah, so we're looking at increasing that incremental, um, issue, if you will, if they continue to have the same offenses, we're going to just hit them a little harder, um, to, to try to curb that. Honestly, looking at the analytics, we don't have a lot of second offenses and since, uh, I've been here and I think we've been here since April and July, we haven't had any third offenses, yay, but if we do, we're looking at increasing that. So that's the second, uh, ordinance that we're looking to change. The third is the solid waste ordinance, what we have today, it's been, uh, urban legend that you cannot have waste out on the sidewalk for more than twenty four hours. I knew that growing up, I knew that, you know, as, as I lived in the city, um, but we can't find that in the ordinance. So I looked back in the nineteen, I think it was sixty four ordinances, sure enough, there it is. It never transitioned to what we, what we look at ordinance wise now. And what we've been noticing is specifically Sunbury Street and others, we're seeing a lot of the toders on the sidewalks permanently out there. And that isn't a good look, especially for our gateways as we move in there, so, um, please read through this. We are looking at changing that ordinance to say the twenty four hour rule, if you will, and not allow the toders out on the, the porch or the sidewalk or whatever for a, a permanent solution. You know, again, as you're coming in sixty one there on Sixth Street and then Sunbury Street, um, you know, we understand that there are uh thin sidewalks there, et cetera, but we just don't want, you know, the, the garbage overflowing and things like that. So changes to that ordinance as well. And the fourth is the IPMC, the IPMC, we have been talking about this for a while now. What was adopted back in twenty seventeen was we said IPMC. And, and that we would follow the UCC and the PMC, we never said this stipulation. And there were al- also other conditions within the IPMC, the International Property Maintenance Code, that you should stip, stipulate that grasses cannot be higher than ten inches or that, uh, heat needs to be turned on from. Help me out, yeah, uh, October, October, November fifteenth through April fifteenth. We didn't have that specified in our ordinances, now we're doing that. So those are the kinds of changes and I think that's the fourth one I have. Yes, so those are the, the recommendations, again, the ordinances will be in there and this is, here the property ordinance change. I lost everybody's attention. Property ordinance change for two ninety three that will be ready for review on the thirteen. And here's the agreement between us and ProChamps as a template for review, so if anybody would like these, I just made two copies of these. Any discussion on any of those?
Yeah, I have two things.
Yes, sir.
Does this just show what you wanna change to, or does this show me what it was and what the change is?
False. It's just false.
So where does it show the two of them?
So it says the current ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, in the, so, sorry, yeah, this does. So any of the smaller ones do, the, um, the landlord tenant has that document on the second page that says, here's the changes. It's just a grid on that one, but this one will say, this is how it reads now and this is, um, the changes that we're recommending.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm lost here because I see the same thing on this page that's on this page, but it has a line through it.
Which one are you looking at, right, okay, so the line out.
It doesn't tell me what the ordinance is that you're trying to change.
Okay, so you're looking at the appearance tickets?
Yeah, just.
Okay, good, so, right, so right now, on the front page of the appearance tickets, what you see is the current ordinance. I started off with, this is what, why we're doing it, this is what we have today. Okay, and then on the second page, it says, this is what we're changing it to and that's, you see the recommended updates, it's actually two thirds down on the first page, recommended updates, so this is what we have today, this is what we're changing it to. And what I did is I just put what we have today and crossed out to make it very clear, I tried, very clear as to what we're removing. So here, I'll, I'll just do it here, here we have, what we have, here we have recommended changes and then I say, the recommended changes show you what is being removed by the line through, by the strikeout. So we're removing all of those chapters that are in today, that we no longer have to reference from the sixty four ordinance.
The chapters aren't even, they're not correct.
But what takes its place, I guess, is my question.
Yeah, so that's in the grid right here and we have, including the reference numbers indicated on the tickets, that is in that grid right there.
Okay, I see.
Okay. And then the fines and penalties is the other section, sorry, I tried to.
Do you mind if I ask a question, Scott? About this, the landlord tenant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the, your Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah.
You're asking like.
That, that was not a question to you, that was a question in the comparison document. What, this is, so this section, this is what we had and I was asking ProChamps, so I just wanted to show you where I was evaluating and.
So you're asking ProChamps, does this need to be retained?
Yes. That's right. That, well, actually, actually, ProChamps and Mr. Kanata, attorney.
Oh, okay, because we obviously want the people that live there on it.
Right.
I mean, that was one of the main.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, no, the units, yeah, absolutely.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have way more registrations than what we currently have.
Way more.
They have identified.
Hey, but it says person and does this need to be retained, so am I just not understanding or what?
Yeah, so this is just in the definitions, the section of two ninety three, the definition of person was not in there and I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it was just, that was the definitions section.
I thought you meant the actual.
No, 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 we're definitely keeping the individual units as well.
Okay, thank you for.
Mm-hmm.
So on the municipal waste one.
Yep.
The only thing what you're gonna be changed is all this in red, correct?
Correct.
Just to be eliminated.
No, actually, the red is to be added because we don't have that in today's ordinance, we need that, so the red is saying, here's what I'm adding.
It does a verbal on Southern Street.
I tried my best, you can't.
They sit there for weeks at a time.
I, because these things are rather extensive, particularly in Atlanta, if you can get copies of these are not the proposed ordinances, which you wanna do, but you have to have them in ordinance form.
That's correct.
And then you get a copy in everybody's, uh, box, they're just gonna look at it before the meeting on the, on the thirteen.
Sure. Sure, how soon before the meeting would you like to review them?
Certainly not that day, sure.
I just don't wanna spend a lot of time if there were questions now, cause you know, right.
Sometime, I'll get them in next week.
Okay.
We're having some time.
Next Wednesday, yay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know we're good.
Any other questions on it?
Jay, do you have anything, do you have anything to add to?
Scott's only.
No. Uh, I mean.
Yeah. We worked together.
Yeah, we're, we're just trying to bring the office up to the twenty first century. Eliminate all this paper filing, there's gonna be some hiccups early on in the process, but, you know, once they sign up the first time, the second time is supposed to be easier. Um, we're gonna have a lot more people in the tax rules, they've identified fifteen hundred rental properties in town and we currently have roughly seven hundred. So it's, it's, you know, they're gonna get, they're, they're gonna get twenty five dollars, we're gonna get twenty five dollars. We get twenty five, or we get thirty dollars now. You know, and they're gonna send out the notices that the late, they're gonna hold them accountable, it's a win, so I think it's a good, good for the city. Mayor, other questions?
Okay, we're done with the code portion part of that.
Do I have to get any verbal to put that on the agenda for the meeting?
Yeah.
Um, council will tell you that maybe that's a, a thirteen.
He just made a recommendation for that.
Okay, yeah. So, Sarah, like, no, that goes on the thirteen. Alright. Um, so we're done with that part, mayor can go to other officials.
Ms. Boy. Jennifer's not here?
Yes.
Uh, nothing from her, Bob?
No.
Mr. Brandon?
I don't have a lot, mayor, uh, just leave a mayor and council note that the water company completed projects in the three to four hundred blocks in South Rock Street and streets were paved, curb to curb, which is a good thing. Uh, street department's finished decorating as of today, mayor, as far as I know, all decorations are done. Uh, they'll get back the leaves and so forth. There's, I, I, I'll bring this up again, just so everybody understands, there are numerous streetlights out in town. They have been reported. I'm gonna refer to Bob because he's the one that's been speaking to him and handling it, he can explain to you exactly what's going on with it. Not that I don't know, but he's been dealing with it more than me.
Yes, they are, they are lights, they are PPL and everybody knows what PPL is to all of us here and, uh, you know. Uh, I have, just to let you know that because the lights are out, that doesn't mean the PPL trucks come in and maybe this, that's done by contractors, subcontractors. Look, uh, I have personally spoken, uh, with representative, in fact, Charlie spoke to me a little bit to update me in case I didn't see last night, uh, what was, what was fixed and what still remains unfixed. Quite a few. Uh, I reached out, left a message for my contact, um, at the PPL location, uh, in this area. At one time, they were located in Marriott Heights and it was quite easy to, uh, ask somebody to come by here at City Hall and sit down and talk with them, but the bottom line is, is that it's not Charlie's fault, it's not the street department's fault, I thank the police department for reporting, uh, the poll numbers and, you know. Other than me, and I don't think our, our bucket truck can, uh, so reach the lights, uh, we have to depend on them, but we are working and I, and I don't want Charlie or the state department to be sort of say rough stuff about it, it's not their fault.
Mayor, all the paper, I, I was able to find out all the paperwork was submit, thank you, Sarah, was submitted properly. They have to put in a claims, what they call claim report and it goes in and naturally gets, Kevin actually went, Scott called about letting one up in the hill that was redone again today, the light that was knocked over during that storm still isn't fixed, he re-entered that and when he did, they told him that the claim is already in, so everything on the city end of it is being done right.
So what we need is a little push from.
Yes, we need.
From somebody.
Yes.
Towards the subcontractor and, and that's what I'm hoping, one more call to a certain person.
Yeah, we're gonna try one other angle, I, that's, that's where it stands. No, nobody has failed at their job, it has been reported. It's, and matter of fact, it was told to me directly that, what do you expect, there's hundred, hundred cities and municipalities with lights out. We get to it when we get to it, that's what I was told.
There are.
You know, and I, I understand the frustration of the citizens because there are three downtowns from open, three on Market Street and it is quite dark, but we are doing the best we can, mayor. And like I said, thanks to the police department along between the police and the street, they got all the numbers and Sarah did what you're supposed to do, it's just a matter of when they get to it, basically is what they said.
And there were a lot of lights.
Yeah, there were, there are, there's still some probably to be found.
I'm not saying we get ten, ten.
Yeah, no, no, it's nothing.
There were a lot of lights out before rain cycle.
Yes, there were. Yes, it was, yes.
We, we, we.
We're, we're working on it, mayor, I, I apologize, but that's the best we can offer right now, we did everything in our power and that's basically it, okay.
My inner Jackson, I'm sorry, I, I'm just, hey. I did wanna mention, I said that I would mention that, uh, Dave Spotts contacted me and informed me that he was stepping back from Music in the Park. Uh, he made that announcement also on Facebook after he spoke with me. Uh, I regret that, I'm, I'm sorry, you know, that that has happened, he's indicated to me that it's a lot of responsibility and he just wants to take a break from it, I'm hoping that that is the case. Um, I didn't get too much of an opportunity to talk to him in detail, but I think we would all agree that Music in the Park program has been very successful and people look forward to it and we've been building on audiences and I really hate to see it go, but I do know from my involvement with Dave that it is a lot of work, much more so than people really understand. And he was doing it, you know, completely on a volunteer basis, uh, so I did say I would make that formal announcement and, uh, you know, maybe something will change, mayor, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Each one of them's a twelve hour day for Dave and, and it's, it's a lot and that, that includes the vending down there and working and everything else that's his responsibility. Does this mean that we are scrapping the schedule we submitted that we voted on?
I, I think that we need.
But there's nobody, I think you have to wait, see.
I am going to reach out to him since I haven't received anything official, what I, how I learned about this was, you know, um.
I call.
Mm-hmm.
I'm on Facebook or whatever, uh, but I would like to speak with you, uh, and.
I, I also would like to add that I, I commend him, you know, I would thank him for, he, he truly has and, uh, it's just so much work and responsibility because you do have to book people, especially musical acts and so forth, I mean, that's a known factor in, in the world of entertainment, so that you can, when you advertise, light switches coming on such and such a date, they're coming. But anyway, Dave, thank you very much for, um, everything.
And he was strictly, strictly a volunteer and a grabber.
Yeah.
Another, another question on that, obviously, if the dates were requested to have these events.
Real promoted.
I assume, I could be wrong, vans were blocked. I don't.
He's going to get back to me, I think vans were, um,
contacted.
Contacted, but there wasn't any firm schedule set up, it's a process.
So there was no department.
There's no foot down for nobody.
No, but as far as I know, no money was put out, maybe, uh, Mr. Lee, you can.
That's interesting. Not from the city's, not from the city's.
I, I, I think Scott, the best I would be to recommend to the whole office and, you know, have the new council and the mayor.
Well, and Bob, if you can reach out to him.
Yeah, I think Bob can reach out to him and can see what's gonna happen, there's no use in us making a commitment at this point, really, I mean.
To the new council.
I hate to see the city lose.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't mean to, but I mean, I, I can't see us proving the dates until we know what's going on.
Well, I think we are already approved.
Oh.
Yeah.
So we cleared the calendars from the old.
I, I would.
I think we.
But I think we need to find out if there are.
We need more information.
That's what I mean, we really don't know, mayor, if we didn't, if we don't know.
Oh, oh, so you don't have a contract, that's what I'm saying.
No.
No, I was.
City has a.
Okay.
We haven't paid anything yet.
Set something up in January for you.
I, I would, yeah, I think that'd be better, Scott, if I didn't pay anything. I, I would, yeah, I think I'd be better, Scott, if I wanted to pay anything, let them look at it in January, as long as we didn't pay anything out.
You can't do that one right now.
Yeah, we really, maybe we can. Okay, I put the dates.
In fact, I didn't know that uh that the mayor elected whatever date there is, uh.
How many total dates were, you know, on?
Ten.
So I think all of them, oh, okay.
And if you request a meeting with him and you want me to sit, I'd be happy to do that, but.
I just have a little bit for now.
Okay, uh, no, if we can just, Sarah correctly from now, uh, if we can just go back, so that no one, the mayor has been able to chuckle out at this. I seem to recall that you submitted a uh. Again.
A call drop?
Yes.
Let me guess, you put the wrong date.
Well, I just wanna say that the mayor has a good question.
I don't know, you pretty good chuckle out of it.
No one, no one in council has any objections, you want to go straight with it, I hope you do because I uh told both parties, uh, and Mr. Jeff Plisik is. Going to uh support it.
Oh, yeah, money has been submitted already, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Well, we don't, Jen does.
But the the mayor has, John Brown has a mayor schmuck who has properly submitted the right form. See, nobody has anything to complain about you.
Regular agenda.
That's uh.
Yeah, okay, I know what you're talking about.
I guess you're on trial.
So the flight, I'm sorry.
So I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm okay, we explained what happened, that's it.
Okay.
All good?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Uh, just one thing there, um, that's Mr. Slavy, did you get an email from Chief Jeffrey about uh grant information?
Yes, today. Well, yesterday he wanted something nice to play with him, now he sent him something else.
Yeah, cuz it has to be in by the twelfth, the application, so.
Okay.
Whatever he's requesting.
He won the guy I gave him now because of the hair, it's cause it's, I I'll call you.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, the couple of things that I had on mine were the ARPA that uh PB hired that Bob said we're doing executive. Uh, meter enforcement, we normally cut the entire month of December off, we didn't decide on a day they wanna stop paying meters.
Right.
And do you not need to officially vote out as the mayor?
No, I guess I.
But he's just been. Consensus from the members of council, right?
We folks only wanna do two weeks this year to appease people, you wanna do the entire month to to continue how we've been doing.
I think we made a ordinance that we can suspend it at any time if so choose.
Yeah, yeah.
But then you're, then you're dismissed. Did you already start that today, my right? It's up to you.
May, may, maybe you're a discretion.
Some already started today.
You could.
Sunbury started, they've got, all their meters are bagged in downtown Sunbury.
Okay, you could, you could suspend in your discretion.
Daniel was the same way, I know that Daniel will bag.
Okay, so we're bagging ours off now.
Yep.
The uh, my, my, only other question on that is. Do we have to have Jennifer's resignation on the agenda to, how do you handle an elected official?
Well, she said she, as of what, the thirty first of December?
Do we have to accept it though, or just just that she did that, that's enough?
Yeah. Accepting it, even if you say we're not gonna accept it, she's resigning, so.
Right.
I would say.
So we don't need anything on the agenda.
She was re, and while, but we're all concerned, unless she rescinds her, which is not excuse, she was resigning.
Voter registration office did suggest that we assume something, if we put it right, so that, so that in two years from now. I can or whoever's in this position can simply tell the voter registration office, yes, this person here was appointed. To replace her for the remaining two years of the term, it's a record thing down at the voter registration office.
So my question was. How would you not have to have anything in writing and then you would replace her in January, she could come around at the second, that's where I say.
You're replacing.
Whoa, hold on, that's right, that's right.
The council, I'm not gonna from you.
They're telling me as long as it is done in a public meeting.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as it's done in a public.
Yeah, I I I think that's more than fair.
Doesn't have to be accepted for, it doesn't have to be accepted for her to be replaced?
No, they're telling you that you don't, it it's just a formality, I mean, you can't stop somebody from resigning.
Right.
But do you officially resign if it's not accepted?
Wait a minute, so she walks away from the office because she made an announcement.
获得了council authorization to proceed with the process of replacing her. Council is gonna have to indict lots of them.
I I see what the mayor's saying, because like if if a police officer turns in a resignation, we have to accept it.
We have to accept it.
Yes.
That's, that's what he's getting at.
You can go through that formal.
I did, I just, that was my question, my impression.
And accept it, how do you, how do you do it?
But the police officer has to submit a formal resignation, is that correct?
Doesn't work, yes.
I know it's cool.
So an elected official can walk away, even though she made an announcement at a public meeting, she can just walk away, I don't feel comfortable with it.
Yeah.
I realize it's just an elected person.
I don't feel comfortable with it.
An employed person.
I think she can be just complex, but.
Yeah.
They're mayor and council, I hear her resigning.
I, I agree with Scott, I think something's missing.
I'll ask for the consulting.
I mean.
Yeah.
She wrote a statement that she read publicly into the newspaper, I I don't believe she gave us anything, you know.
I don't think, but, but if she doesn't, and this is just me, if she doesn't give us something in writing and we don't vote on it, I accept it.
Right, she's not.
I don't think you can replace her.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that's not.
She was just not attending meetings for two years.
Our is only the registration office, that is Schimokman's product, that's how they wanna handle that, from their standpoint, they don't need anything. Cause they're gonna send in two years, they're gonna send a notice up here for for, again, the administrator to update everybody that's in their position.
I don't feel comfortable with it. I, I see you deep respect it every year, I have to say.
But what's the, what's, why is there a problem with us formally, you know, on this, I'm agreeing with, no, I'm agreeing with you.
I just wanna.
I, I, I.
Why can't we just act on it regarding to whether anything is submitted?
Just, I'll, I'll call them here. I'll call and ask her if she'll submit her resignation.
I, I feel more comfortable, yes, that she.
You gotta have it right.
Get him, she don't have to write no five page letter, just something, and submit it to us.
But if that doesn't happen, we can still go forward and.
Yeah, well, yeah, but it's gotta be made a matter of practice.
Well, yeah.
But as you say, as her November's meeting or whatever, we formally accept her name.
I can't, I can't.
Voter registration office, you can do it, so.
I can't, it's a memorial station, so.
Yeah, she has a couple of meetings, we were waiting on, uh, to executive session.
Does anybody have anything prior to executive? Okay, first part of the executive session, you need to get this police hiring taken care of before we do any of this.
So the mayor and members of council want the solicitor and the chief of police.
Now, when we come out of the executive session, we'll be, we'll be going back into a public forum or will we end the meeting?
We'll be, we'll need to, okay, because when.
Yeah, I, I don't care, I'll do it publicly.
Well, she's another executive session, I know.
Okay.
So like I said, why don't we do Ray, do her and then deal with the ARPA stuff.
Are we, I'll wait.
Why don't we just take Brenda's commentary first and then go into executive session?
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, take care of Ray, take care of Ray and then to.
Yeah.
But you sit and read it, you don't even know what's in it.
That's correct. So we should.
Oh, I have to see it.
Well, we don't need to know, we just need them to hear concerns.
Okay, I don't care how you do it.
Go ahead.
That's what I'm saying, so we have it all.
Okay.
For the wingman.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know what her concerns are.
That's what I'm saying.
You want me to say it now or what do you want me to do?
Go ahead and address it now.
Council should move into an executive session, I'd like to solicit myself.
Okay.
Dale, Dale, the chief of police, personnel, when done with him, we can excuse him and you can, I read it on the list. Then we should go over the contractual paperwork with Cetacup and when we're done with that.
Then we can bring her.
You can bring Brenda in and listen to her.
That's fine, and I don't mind doing it in public, because whatever I say is probably gonna go public anyhow. Are you going to executive?
Sorry, folks, we'll be going into executive session now, we'll be coming back to the regular meeting only to adjourn the public workshop. Uh, there will be no further business being discussed after the executive session, so, good night, folks.
Excuse me, sir. Coming at you.